Right now, we don't have a chair in the office.
Thank you.
Oh, and they did it?
Are you serious?
Every week, that's our date.
Three o'clock in the morning, sitting there? Or you were kind of like...
Fifty cells. He only sells twice a year.
This is the one time of year I get to bang the gavel.
Well, dude, that'd be a lot of that.
So, I'd like to call the annual meeting of the board together and stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the first order of business is to elect officers. And so, I would need a nomination for the position of chairperson.
I nominate David Lawson.
Second. Oh. Gotcha.
I'll pass. Go this way?
Pass.
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 Pass. Okay. So, I will now pass out the votes. The ballot. I think we still have to do a paper ballot. So, I work for... Sue, if you please, please pass the mic. You can hold it if you feel comfortable. Hold it three times, just in case.
Next time, I'm gonna shoot air planks.
Thank you.
Two ballots and...
I feel like vote the joke.
We're gonna tell them that anyway.
Hope there aren't any hanging... I see a hanging chat. So, that's eight yays, zero nays, and zero abstentions. And with that, Mr. Lawson is elected the chairman of the board. And at this point, we'll turn the meeting over to him. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your... No pun intended, but vote of confidence. I really appreciate it. And I'm very confident that we'll get through the next couple of months and still provide a very excellent education for the children in this school district. Okay, at this time, we'll be electing vice president. Now, do nominations, starting with Phil.
I nominate Tammy.
Pass.
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 What's the next one?
I don't know. Yes.
Don't give him another one.
Okay, that would be eight, zero unanimous. Congratulations, Tammy.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate that.
At this time, I'll be accepting nominations for secretary, starting Eileen.
Nominate Angie. Oh, we nominated... Pass.
Nominate Angie.
Nominate Angie. Pass.
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 There's no extras there for Bill. It's what we call it.
All you want.
Make it harder.
We have an extra.
Eight, zero. Congratulations, Angie. And now, we'll entertain nominations for assistant secretary. Phil.
I'm gonna pass.
Pass.
Pass. Eileen Monahan.
Pass.
Pass.
Which one? She left the last one.
And that's another eight to zero vote. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Really jumping on the board, huh?
Okay, prior to asking for your motion to adjourn, in keeping with our bylaws, I'm going to give out some quick handouts. It's just a reprint of our statement of integrity as well as ethics.
These are bylaws.
That's integrity, and that's ethics.
Okay. And that's just a quick reminder. Again, that is from our policy manual within our bylaws. Also, along with that, we've taken the liberty, handing out from CAEB, the... Often, we get some questions regarding the Board of Education from the public. And this is some of the work they've done relating to integrity and ethics. And it's also their best practices that they put forward to all member boards throughout the state of Connecticut. If you have any questions on those items, will be available, obviously. As usual, just give us a call, email, or what have you, and we'll be happy to answer any inquiries you have. With that being said, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? Those in favor? And thank you. Much, everybody. Little clerical thing, folks. If you could pass that down to Mr. Taylor, please. All right, if you would... I'm sorry. I'll call the order. Our December 19 regular meeting, 7:30. Please join me in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Our first order of business is recognition. At that... At this point, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Smith.
All right. Thank you very much. So, I was looking. I didn't see Dr. Longo float in. So, I'll be punting, I think, on behalf of Dr. Longo. Our first awardee tonight is Kara Sozby, who received the Lions Club piece poster contest. And that is this one here. So, Kara's here. One up, Kara. So, in recognition of her piece poster, we have this for you. And this will go back to the Lions Club and be entered into the regional...
Well, let's show it to 'em first. This is a masterpiece. You wanna explain just a bit of it? I know it's a little hard in the back, but...
It's like, the kind of concept I was going with was this girl and the way she kind of felt the world seemed to be like and the way she kind of wanted the world to be like and envisioned the world as.
That's cool. Wonderful piece of art. And it's going to the Lions Club, who is, again, going to enter it statewide. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next up, we have Ms. Claire Daniels. Claire, if you wanna come on up. And Claire has been recognized as the VFW Patriot Pen Essay Contest winner. And I did see Dr. Longo, who's here, and he could talk a little bit about that essay. And we have... You already got the gift from Ms. Daniels?
So, the Patriots pen, this is tradition we have each year for our eighth graders. And Claire's essay was chosen. And actually, she's gonna be recognized, I think. That date is coming up in the next few weeks. But with the board meeting meeting now, we wanted to recognize her even before she gets the award.
Do you wanna tell everybody about the essay, Claire?
I just wrote about why we're so lucky to live in America.
Nice job. Thank you. Then we have four retirees tonight. The first retiree, Dr. Alton Hoff, couldn't be here. But we can say that she was here for 16 years. She began her career at... Split between JPS and the high school. And she finished her career with us at New Milford High School. So, although she's not here, I'm sure she'll watch the video. So, I can say thank you, Ms. Alton Hoff, and wish her luck in retirement. And then, Ms. Claudia Avery, I saw her come in. Ms. Avery has been with the New Milford Public Schools for 24 years. First, she started as a par educator. Then, she was a teacher clerk. She was a computer tech. And she finishes her career here at Sarnoble as a secretary. And we say thank you. So, please come up. No, no, you have to come up. 24 years and one day. Yes, you have to go. That's it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Linda Mercier. She's a par educator, has been with us for 10 years. And she's gonna go on to finish her degree in accounting when she leaves. So, congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
It's been an honor. Thank you.
And we have Ms. Janet Natale. Ms. Natale's been with us for 28 years. First, she started at JPS and then at Sarnoble. And she's finishing her career, split between Sarnoble and the high school. And so, as a speech... Sorry, as a speech pathologist, which... Trying to say that, I probably need some help there. Ms. Natale, if you wanna come up, we can recognize you as well. Okay, now, we get to the December stars of the month. This is our staff recognition. We recognize one staff member from each building in the district and then one staff member that kinda works not in a specific building. Our first one this month is Ms. Carla Buffington. Ms. Buffington... And I'll read to you what the person that nominated said about them. And so, I will embarrass you for a moment, but I appreciate that. Ms. Buffington is a wonderful reading teacher. She approaches her work with passion and heart. She is truly overjoyed when a student makes gains in their reading progress. Ms. Buffington puts her heart and soul into helping students read. So, at Sarnoble, Ms. Buffington is a reading teacher. Please come on up. For New Milford High School, we have Mr. Lee DeVal. The high school is a showplace because of the dedication of this man. He works tirelessly to keep New Milford High School in the impeccable condition it is in. He also goes above and beyond when it comes time for school to end and over the summer. He is a model staff member at the high school. Mr. DeVal, come on up. From Northville, Ms. Allison Drahoda. Allison is a dedicated paraprofessional who gives her all each day to encourage the students she works with to reach their full potential. She helps instill the character traits that are valued here at NES and she... As she works with the children. She collaborates with teachers and other staff members in order to provide the best support for the students she works alongside. Mr. Coda. At Scaticook, Ms. Jen Okoski. Jen works very hard to help her special education students learn and grow. She is very dedicated to them, and they know she is always in their corner. Ms. Okoski, I saw you back there. At Hillen Plain, Ms. Kathy Taylor. Kathy works tirelessly to create learning opportunities for students with very difficult behavioral needs. Her goal is to teach and not just manage their behavior. And their creativity and dedication to her mission makes her a huge asset to the district. Ms. Taylor. And our non-school-specific, which is kinda school-specific, if our Litchfield Hills program, is Ashley Venatero. Ashley has a wonderful way of talking to and working with students, parents, and other staff members that is always respectful and kind, but is also meaningful and helpful and with suggestions. She may be relatively new to the teaching profession, but she is wise beyond her years and extremely talented. So, at this point, we'll do the drum roll. And each of these folks will receive a pin to celebrate the dedication to the district. And then, one of these boxes has a little sticker on the inside that will give you the Ingersoll vehicle to drive for the month of December. So... All right, so please open your boxes. It's exciting, right? Christmas comes over. So, one of you has a green sticker. It might be...
I don't know. We just read the lottery.
So, congratulations. Thank you. So, small parting gift for those of you...
We're gonna take a short break. And please, we have some refreshments up here, and we'll commence with the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you very much. We'll reconvene. Thank you.
And last week, the girls varsity basketball team won their game. I'm not sure the final score, but I know we had 70 points, which for our girls' basketball team, it was great. We won by over 20 points, so hopefully our girls' basketball team will go somewhere great this year.
And the Math Honor Society is going to do their annual water bottle and thermos sale this year. We're all excited about the thermoses. We're really hoping that'll bring in a little bit more money for the Math Honor Society.
And last night was our winter band and orchestra concert, which was postponed from last Thursday due to the snow day. It was a huge success. I hope you were there, because never want to miss that sleigh riding Christmas festival that happens every year. But if you did miss it, our next concert will be January 25th, and that is with the Scaticook Band as well, so that's always a fun one to see. And just a last little plug, but a couple of days ago, the Hollywood Christmas Parade did air on the CW, so if you missed it, you might want to make some friends with maybe Mrs. Stewart or somebody else in the band and see if you can catch our 10 seconds of fame on national television. Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Happy holidays. You too.
Okay. Sounds like a great place to be.
It was very nice.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the approval minutes. I need a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, workshop minutes, November 21st, 2017. That's all I have.
Second.
And just a reminder, let's make sure we were in attendance at that meeting for the votes, okay? Those in favor? Abstained? And opposed? Okay, thank you. And the regular meetings, minutes for November 21st, 2017. A motion?
Some of them.
Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? And abstaining? Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd just like to start by congratulating the chair and new officers and welcoming our new recruits. I hope your time here is enjoyable and that we can support you in any way you should need. This afternoon, I had the opportunity to sit with our administrative, our school administrators as they participated in the revision work that we're doing, and I just want to make sure the board's aware of the hard work and how rewarding it is to sit in a room and listen to administrators talk about quality instruction and the growth happening in this district. It was powerful. Earlier this month, some of the board members were able to join me for a visit to Scaticook. I hope that their time there was as rewarding as mine. I think it's great to be in our schools and to see the work that you do as a board kind of manifest in our buildings. And so we'll be scheduling more of those visits over the upcoming year, and I encourage any of you that can get away from the other tasks you support during the day to be a part of it. And then this is our last meeting of 2017, and so I just want to thank you all for the year that we've spent together. We have some hard work to do next year, but it's good work, and I think it's important to the community, and I appreciate being part of the team with all of you. So have a happy holiday and a safe new year.
You too.
Thank you.
And moving on to the chair report. Some administrative things, so please bear with me. What I'll be passing out are the committee assignment preference sheets. If you could get those back to me, or the district office as soon as you can, that would be wonderful. And then we can...
Maybe one more.
Do it that way. Drop them off, mail them to me, whatever your preference is, that's fine. Also, at this point, I'd like to take the opportunity to appoint the parliamentarian for the upcoming year, Mrs. Formback.
Sure.
And while I'm at it, a unique situation this year, which I'll get to with a couple more items I'll be discussing, but one interim committee assignment, and that would be for the operations. And the reason being, we have double duty going on for budgets. This year's budget as well as next year's budget, and we will be working in conjunction with the administration and the town to come to resolution on that. So with that being said, I'd be appointing this evening interim operations chairman, Wendy Formback, as well. The superintendent did mention school visits. Please, I encourage you, if there's a specific time that you can make it, you know, let us know. I'm not sure if it can happen, but we would certainly like to do that. Also, today, myself, the operations chair, our finance director, and Josh, and I met with the mayor to discuss the school budget. What it, today's...
Yeah, well, what we were talking about today were the budget drivers for, specifically,
the school budget for next year. You've been appraised of those. You're aware that salaries are a big part and medical's a big part. I mean, we already know that. Along with that, I would like to say we did have an extremely touching moment, if you can believe that, but the 60 children from the Children's Center...
Popped in?
Popped in, and they were Christmas caroling. It's an art that still exists. I can attest to that. And they sang, they were there for four numbers, I believe, jingle bells, they had their little bells. Wonderful, wonderful times. Also, we'll be meeting with the mayor Thursday to lay groundwork for the budget cuts coming down from the state. Now, again, it's going to take a while, so, but we do want to get the wall rolling on that. And finally, Merry Christmas. Pardon me. Okay, facilities, Brian.
Well, we had a very productive meeting last Tuesday, I guess it was. Some of the discussion, the big item of discussion was the Willis Building ADA report and some of the recommended and required repairs with a timeline as to when they should occur. Currently, there are some repairs that have to happen. Not a whole lot of money in those repairs. I know you all saw the reports, I won't go over it line by line, but going out in five-plus years, looking at upgrading electrical systems and other more expensive repairs, and obviously we're going to have a lot of discussion about these as a board, whether, what we need to do and when we need to do them. Also, on the agenda, we learned about the fire hydrant testing. Some of our fire hydrants need some repairs, and that'll happen in the spring, but there's no danger in any way to any buildings with those. The oil tanks were all tested and some minor deficiencies, and they're also working to figure out what we need to do with those. Roof scan was done, which is interesting, because I know when we were looking at roofs, the most, we were thinking that it would be Northville would be the next roof that needs to be repaired, but it's actually this building's had the most, and that also is a work in progress, and we'll hear more about that in future meetings. And NES, fire alarms will be replaced and tested over the break. Fortunately, the kids won't be there for that. If you've ever been in a building that's had fire alarm testing, it's a lot of fun. And of course, we talked about it, we had the SMS water heater immediate, emergency repair and replacement, not repair. And the good thing about that is our food service passed their health inspection at the, while about repair, yeah, when they had no hot water, so, with 100%, so. And that's pretty much that meeting in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. Operations?
Okay, so we have our monthly reports, which will open up for discussion this evening, which we approve every month, and there was some conversation in which I'm sure when we get to each one of those pieces, we can bring up the questions that came through on that. I think that there was also, we had briefly discussed our capital reserve and looking for an update on having that spreadsheet given to the board or coming for the board, and the capital reserve is, we're pretty good with that. Everything is where it's supposed to be, so that's, that's good news. We've also have a revised Exhibit A, I believe, with the position being on here that we are looking at, so that's nice to see of filling that position. We've had, the PTO had $2,600 or $2,665 of donations, and we also had a unified bowling donation as well on here that we're looking at for this evening. We had our, we did have an executive session regarding the Sherman contract. We're not bringing that forward yet. We still have a few things to work through, and when we finish that up, we'll bring that to the board accordingly.
And policy.
David, let's see. Action will add in for tonight, you'll see Policy 1140, is on the agenda tonight for first review. Just a little background, the policy was changed here to provide some carve-outs for principals to approve flyers within their own buildings. That's new language. I don't know if you see it in the packet here, but if in red, you'll see that. And any request for non-school-connected groups would still be referred to the officer superintendent. One of the things we discussed at that meeting was this will allow our superintendent not necessarily to get bogged down with all that minutia, but also focus on instructional missions, so we felt that was important, coming out of subcommittee. One recommendation I will encourage, and we mentioned this at policy, is that perhaps we develop regulations to support this policy that surround it. Again, the approval would be coming from us for the policy itself, the regulations that are underneath it, and in order that we can kind of comport with the, either it's the electronic distribution of some of this material or the social media use for these types of notices. So that's one thing. So you'll see that tonight later on the agenda. We also began the process of reviewing the 1,000 series. So what I would do is encourage members of the incoming policy subcommittee and members of the full board, in fact, to take a look at your 1,000 series, and if you see items there, I would pass that on to the policy chair, whoever that might be. And perhaps that's a good start, and also I would encourage even new members to dig back into the 9,000 series, and bylaws are really, you know, the nuts and bolts of our operation as a board, and I appreciate that, David, or thank you for bringing, you know, two 9,000s back and for us to review.
You're welcome.
So, thank you.
And committee on learning.
All right, well, our committee on learning meetings are getting long again, now that we have all these curriculum and different things that we're talking about, but we did have a great meeting two Tuesdays ago. We had a presentation by Dr. Thomasello about social emotional learning that's happening in our K through two schools. He identified the audience being students, teachers, administrators, and parents, and he said that he sees about 450 students per week for classroom lessons at each of the schools. The themes of his work revolves around growth mindset for students, and he talks to them about making good choices, how their behavior impacts their class, and coping skills, kindness, and gratitude. Dr. Thomasello said the other part of his consulting will focus on the transition from pre-K to K, grades two to three, five to six, and eight to nine, basically when they're jumping to a new school. And also during the presentation, Mr. Corpo shared a summary of the social emotional work being done within the district from pre-K through 12. Highlights included, of course, Dr. Thomasello's work at the elementary level, but also the addition of the certified behavioral analyst who was hired full-time this year, team building, field trips, and bullying presentations at the middle school, and anti-bullying activities at the high school. So it was a really robust presentation. It was nice to see the work that's being done in our district. We have two curricula coming up later on for approval, Health K through two and Health seven and eight. We had a request for new courses. This will also be on the agenda for later. Digital photography, AP Computer Science Principles, and word processing and Google Apps. Flowcharts were provided to illustrate why the new courses were needed, but there was some concern regarding the word processing and Google Apps course. Members wanted additional information clarity and suggested combining, modifying some of the courses to better meet the needs of the students. So it was decided to bring the requests for all the courses with the discussed modifications to the board for approval, and everyone did receive in their packets a revised, well, a memo and a revised request for the word processing Google Apps course, which they're now calling computer literacy. So we'll have some opportunity to discuss that later. The, Mr. Corpo discussed upcoming art department course changes designed to open opportunities for students, and of course, we had another conversation about possible budget drivers, and Mr. Corpo said they continue to examine opportunities to best utilize resources to support students and aspirations, and there's an alumni survey coming in January to further add to this conversation. So it was a lengthy but very, we did a lot of work, so we'll talk about some of these things later.
Thank you. At advance?
We didn't have a December meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. And, oh, I get to CAE. As far as CAE's concerned, I think many of you are receiving some of the emails anyway. I'm going to stray a little bit from CAE, but the state legislature is going to be meeting in early January. It's unclear at this point if they'll be discussing school funding and things like that. I'm not sure. I don't think so, but you never know with these types of things. So we're, getting back to what I said earlier, you know, we're still in this limbo right now and need some definitive direction, but we're pretty sure there's going to be cut somewhere. And that will be it for CAE. And negotiations, I think you already mentioned, and Sherman.
Yes, the Sherman we'll bring back, and also, I forgot to mention under operations, but it is negotiations, that I've asked to have the board be supplied a list of where we are in the negotiation cycle with all the bargaining units. So we have a bit of a structure for current board members and new board members of where we've been and where we're going, of what we've done, so we'll get that.
Thank you. And magnet school?
No meeting, no essay.
Okay, sounds good. All right, discussion, possible act...
school. And also during the presentation, Mr. Corpo shared a summary of the social emotional work being done within the district from pre-K through 12. Highlights included, of course, Dr. Thomasello's work at the elementary level, but also the addition of the certified behavioral analyst who was hired full-time this year, team-building, field trips, and bullying presentations at the middle school, and anti-bullying activities at the high school. So it was a really robust presentation, it was nice to see the work that's being done in our district. We have two curricula coming up later on for approval, Health K through 2 and Health 7 and 8. We had a request for new courses, this will also be on the agenda for later, digital photography, AP Computer Science Principles, and word processing and Google Apps. Flowcharts were provided to illustrate why the new courses were needed, but there was some concern regarding the word processing and Google Apps course. Members wanted additional information clarity and suggested combining, modifying some of the courses to better meet the needs of the students. So it was decided to bring the requests for all the courses with the discussed modifications to the board for approval, and everyone did receive in their packets a revised, well, a memo and a revised request for the word processing and Google Apps course, which they're now calling computer literacy, so we'll have some opportunity to discuss that later. The, Mr. Corpo discussed upcoming art department course changes designed to open opportunities for students, and of course, we had another conversation about possible budget drivers, and Mr. Corpo said they continue to examine opportunities to best utilize resources to support students and aspirations, and there's an alumni survey coming in January to further add to this conversation. So it was a lengthy, but very, we did a lot of work, so we'll talk about some of these things later.
Thank you. At advance?
We didn't have a December meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. And, oh, I get to CAPE. As far as CAPE's concerned, I think many of you are receiving some of the emails anyway. I'm gonna stray a little bit from CAPE, but the state legislature is going to be meeting in early January. It's unclear at this point if they'll be discussing school funding and things like that, I'm not sure, I don't think so, but you never know with these types of things. So we're, getting back to what I said earlier, you know, we're still in this limbo right now and need some definitive direction, but we're pretty sure there's gonna be cut somewhere. And that will be it for CAPE. And negotiations, I think you already mentioned, and Sherman.
Yes, the Sherman we'll bring back, and also, I forgot to mention under operations, but it is negotiations, that I've asked to have the board be supplied a list of where we are in the negotiation cycle with all the bargaining units. So we have a bit of a structure for current board members and new board members of where we've been and where we're going, of what we've done, so we'll get that.
Thank you. And magnet school?
No meeting, no essay.
Okay, sounds good. All right, discussion, possible action. Exhibit A, personnel certified, non-certified appointments, resignations, and leaves of absence dated December 19th, 2017.
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? Sensing none, those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Monthly reports. I need a motion to approve my monthly reports. Budget position dated November 30th, 2017. Purchase resolution D-705 and request for budget transfers.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Could I follow up from the operations meeting?
Absolutely.
I had a few questions. The source for teachers' encumbrance.
Yes, that was approved at the November meeting.
Right.
But it wasn't converted to a purchase order before the end of December, before the end of November, sorry. So this report capturing everything through November 30th did not capture that purchase order, but that will be going against that sub-line, and you will see it on next month's report, if we provide one for the budget hearing.
Okay, so we'll see that next month, we didn't say that, okay, great. It's for $660,000. Okay, great. I have a few follow-ups, okay. We're also looking at, what was the other question? Capital reserve has been taken care of, and I think that's it on this report, for me.
Any ones? Okay, those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, Gibson donations.
Can I make a motion?
Let me ask her one first. I need a motion to accept Gibson donations, PTO, Exhibit B, in the amount of $2,665.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, a big thank you, once again, it's just a remarkable, how much money is raised and donated back to the school district. Those that are in favor? And those that are in favor? That's unanimous. And I need a motion to accept Gibson donations, CIS, CIAC, in the amount of $1,100, $500.
So moved. Second.
Second to all, I think. Okay, any discussion? I think this came before us before, yes, sir.
Just great to see the Unified Bowling, it's a great program, and, you know, in addition to see Cass actually kicking back somewhere to help support us.
Right, absolutely.
Appreciate that.
I would also like to add that I think it's great that we're able to have all the students participate in all the different ones that are coming up this year, that's really great. This is not only beneficial for our special ed students, but the traditional students who step up and want to join these clubs to help the special ed students. It's very heartwarming to see that happen, and thank you, Dr. Longo, for all your work with Virginia Unified Sports, Scotty Coop, appreciate it.
Those in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, we're at the policies for first review. 1140, distribution of materials to and by students, use of students. Any comments on that? I know Mr. Schum referenced it in his report, any clarifications? This will come before the board again, so if you have any, okay. Moving on, the approval of the following curricula. I need a motion to approve the following curricula, Health K through 2nd grade and Health 7 and 8.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, new program or courses?
Can I ask that we break these out individually?
Individually?
One of the ten.
Does anyone have any issues with, okay. Before we get to the, oh, I just want to make a clarification, I'm not sure if you're on F, number three, if we could change that to computer literacy. I'm gonna refer to the parliamentarian, do I need a motion to make that correction?
No, it's not a special meeting, it's a clarification.
Okay, so if we could change that to computer literacy, and we'll start, I need a motion to approve the following new course, digital photography.
So moved.
I'll second, okay.
Just one second.
J.T. Schum. Any discussion? Those in favor? And opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. AP Computer Sci, I need a motion to approve the following new course, AP Computer Science Principles.
So moved. A second.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I'm just going to say, I spoke my piece about this, I think, at the, the subcommittee meeting, and I will not be supporting it on principle, because I think we need to be bringing other classes that are not AP.
Okay, so noted, thank you. Yeah?
I, I'm, I will not be supporting this for a little bit of a different reason, I think there's a little bit, I appreciate the memo and the clarity on this, I think there is a, I would like to have seen this conversation happen a little bit sooner to the board. I feel that coming into budget, gotta be very careful, and I still have a lot of questions, and I'm not prepared to send it through, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Any other, yes, sir?
I did want to add too, we had a lively committee on learning discussion on all of these courses, specifically AP Computer Science Principles, and what's now being called computer literacy, and I think Angie made a really grounded point, and that was, are we surveying students? And that, I think, we really should be coming back to that question too, because what is the need for this course, and what are our students requesting? Because I know, students will say, I would like to take this course, and it does not exist in the current program of studies. So I think it's incumbent upon administration and our teachers to ask those questions as well, and I would almost argue that that lives in the request for new program or course. But I remember you saying that, and I said, that just rings so true, that we should be asking students, we should be asking recent graduates too. Some of the best intel we get as teachers and administrators is coming back from graduates to say, this course was a great preparation for that, or this is a deficit that's in that program, what would you like to have seen at New Wilford High School? So I will say that, but I agree with Angie on that.
I understand many of the concerns, I might have to refer to Mr. Smith or Mr. Shigru, but we have a high percentage of students going on to college, 80-plus, 80, 80, well, we'll use 80%. And AP, over the years, I shouldn't say over the years, I'd say in the last five years, has redone their course structures, the curriculum, the way they're presented, and they are structured to give that college experience for everybody. And I think that's something, I taught AP for close to 20 years, and within the last five years, the curriculum has changed dramatically to make that experience and exposure for all students. And particularly with computers, that's the era we're in, and I'll be strongly supporting that course. Yes, sir?
I have been vocal in my, my past positions in the town of New Wilford Board of Ed, and when I served on the council, now I'm back here, that I can appreciate the 80% of our students that go down to college. I have to wonder, of that 80%, how many are graduating, particularly within four years? And I've always been one who, what do we do for the student, who's the average student? What do we do for the student who doesn't go on to college? Yes, we have to prepare them for college, let's not forget about that 20% that don't, or for the, the students who are in the middle, who struggle to try and attempt to take those AP classes, or step down back to a more basic level of class. And we are driven, because I think AP is, is important, it sounds good, but what are we doing for those who are not? And I will always comment on that, I've done that since I've served in public office in this, this town over 13 some odd years I've been here, and I will come, continue to be vocal on that issue of those who are not going off to college. And, and what do we do for them? We cannot forget the people in the middle, or the people who struggle, who may not make it in these courses, and with the course, we need new instructors, whether we need more teachers that are certified versus non-certified in particular courses. So I'd like to see that addressed, and I think we do that in digital photography, and I think that's important, that's where we're, our society's moving now, it's all digital. And those, that's something on my understanding, is that students have requested that class because of where our, our society and technology has gone. You know, is this AP class serving just a handful of students, or is it serving many? I have my concerns about it also.
Thank you. First of all, I think all of us share the concern for others that do not, and I think if you would take, if we take, take the time to look at the new courses proposed in the last five years, you will know, we will note that most of them have not been AP or at the high end. I don't have that.
I have that, I have that information.
Oh.
Twenty-seven, non-AP.
From 2013 to 2016, eight AP courses were added, 27 non-AP.
Okay, so I would argue we are cognizant of that, we have been cognizant of that, and even tonight, you know, it's a two-to-one ratio here, but anyway, ten?
Can I ask Alicia if you, if you, how many overall courses do we have that are AP versus ones that are not AP? Not only the ones that we've recently looked at, but currently reside in the high school.
So I didn't do the analysis of all of the current courses? Well, I shouldn't say that, hold on, I do have a breakdown by department, I'm just gonna need a minute to count them all.
I just want to say, is this pertinent to the curriculum?
Well, I think it would be a good snapshot to see really where we are with AP versus non-AP, since that's part of discussion.
Well, I wanted to keep it to the actual courses, but we can proceed.
Yes, I have some.
Yeah.
Some question. Committee on Learning was, it was great, because there was a lot of discussion, and I, and I truly appreciate that. So my question on, on these three courses in general, and I, for me, it's a balancing act, you know, we just looked at a course that was argued or mentioned at Committee on Learning, that it was student-driven for, for photography. These may be small costs, but there are costs associated with this, and we, we don't know exactly what's coming down the way. We're in discussions with the town to sit back and really take a look moving forward on everything that we do. So with that in mind, I guess my question is, is this something that has to be, since there are still questions this evening being asked, does this have to be decided this evening?
Well, I'm prepared to vote yea or nay this evening.
But do these conversations come throughout the budget process, or even could it come as late as budget adoption? Is it too late by then?
Well, well, it deals with, I'm gonna have to defer to the administration on this, but we're.
I'm just asking a timing question.
I would say.
We're doing registration for next year.
That's, I understand.
And there are some courses that may be on the docket that we don't run. There may not be enough enrollment, or even, we know we have scheduling conflicts and things like that. So there are many courses that may or may not run, and I don't know.
Well, if you, if the, in order for these courses to be available in course registration.
Which is, the timeframe is, please?
Now, I mean, we're building the book.
But are they out there right now that we're offering?
They're not out there now, but they will be in the next three weeks, once the, and that would be prior to budget adoption. And so if the board chooses not to approve these courses, then they would not be in course selection.
Right.
And.
So there's a timing issue.
And I would say even the cost issue of this, two of these courses fall under the business department, which is funded in part through a Perkins grant, and those costs won't totally show up in the budget. And then the computer science principles, the teacher that currently teaches AP Computer Science is already trained under the Taft model. You don't have to be certified through the Taft, it's a training we elect to send our AP teachers to, because it prepares them to teach the course, but she's already been through this course, so those costs are not associated to these three courses at this time.
So there's no cost to these courses?
You have to go back to the course proposal and look if there's any cost, but the, for the, like, the digital photography course, for example, is funded through, is funded through Perkins, though.
Right.
That won't show up in our budget.
Right.
And I, and as is the computer science principles, and I don't think the computer literacy had any cost associated to it, off the top of my head, right?
Right, that one would, but it's minor.
Right.
I'm going to assume we won't need a textbook for it?
And I have those numbers for you, and I, Ms. Fallenbach, I want to address the timing issue, because on that initial course proposal form, it was always due to my office in November, and we've backed that up to September 30th, so that we're not ever in a position where we're bringing a course that needs to go through COLA a few times to the board. So that change has been made, and it'll go into effect immediately.
So moving forward, the goal is to have it by September?
By September 30th.
For a variety of reasons?
Yes, yes.
You know, because there's still a lot of questions, and, and I think that, you know, just for me, a lot of those questions are still unanswered, and so unfortunately, with the timing, it, it seems a little rushed, so, but I'm glad to see that we're moving forward on that.
Okay, any further?
Do you have the answers at large?
I do, so there's 130 College Prep and 22 AP.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or comments?
A question, and.
Yeah.
The description says it's a new advanced AP course, and.
Then two sentences down, the intent of this course is to engage everyday students in all aspects of computing.
Yeah, and that, I think that's the point I was trying to make. I'm gonna have to use the analogy, this isn't your dad's Oldsmobile. AP has gone through radical, radical curriculum changes in the last several years geared towards that student going to college, whether it's a two-year college or a four-year college, that's what they're geared towards, hence the target audience, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, well, for lack of a better word, everybody.
I would even say that even like, if you're a tool and die maker, so we're talking about that trade, that skill trade, it has really gone computer-based, and a course like this really could apply in several career-oriented fields as well. So it does have that benefit of serving a multitude of students.
Okay, so will the everyday student that's mentioned here get into this AP course?
Could be, yes, because it's open to anyone, college, it's a, it's a college or career path, part of that college or career pathway we're trying to create.
Okay. Thank you.
Brian?
I just, it seems to me that it's, I, I would have liked to have been at the, the meeting, because I missed the discussion on it, but I think in, you know, if we're talking about teaching 21st century skills to kids, where just about every single job out there requires some serious computer literacy, it seems like, it seems like it's a no-brainer that we would offer this course. And I missed the discussion on Thursday, and I don't mean to use no-brainer.
Okay, it's all, okay, anything else? Those in favor? And opposed? Motion passes. And I need a motion to approve the following new course, computer literacy.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Is this course something that should be provided to our students before high school? I know that most 8th graders are knowledgeable on Google Apps, because the first day of class in, in high school, they're told by teachers, this is what you're using, this is how you're sending in your homework and your papers, that's day one, so I'm gonna venture to say, a lot of these students are coming in with some level of literacy on that type of program. Before they even get to high school, is it something we should be putting to 7th and 8th graders as opposed to the rest of the high school and filling an entire year of course here?
So that was part of the discussion, when I had gone back to the department with Mr. Williams, because we ended up changing the course content and the title based on the discussion that happened there. So what the department shared with me is that Google Apps is really used in education, right, and they do start early around, and they have somewhat of a knowledge base of it. What they were looking to do was expand upon keyboarding, because I asked them to go back and survey kids, and really find out how many kids are taking this course because they want to take it, and how many are taking it because they thought it was just an easy course to take. So 77% of the students were surveyed, half of those students said they took it because it was. Half of those students said they took it because it was just put on their schedule because it fit, and half of that seventy-seven percent said they took it because it was an easy course. When I spoke to the department, they shared with me that it really wasn't a Google Docs, Microsoft, you know, discussion. Really what it was more about, when we got down to the meat of it, were that there was, there were different standards that weren't being addressed, that needed to be addressed and could be addressed in keyboarding with a simple course change and a curriculum rewrite. So what they would like to do is move kids from just using technology as learning, like, learning to use technology to using technology as a tool for learning. And so when we really, when I went back there the second time to have a more thorough discussion about why this course change was being proposed, they really came forward with what the true intent of this course was to become. We also talked about Microsoft and the fact that the B C A course, because that came up too in Committee on Learning, why that course should stay. And in the memo I, I shared with the board that that discussion really was because that's what's used in the business world and our kids aren't getting enough of the Microsoft Suite prior to high school because we are a Google district.
And, and that was one of my next questions to you. In, in the business, in private industry, Microsoft Suite is, is what's being used. That's the application in the business world. And I, and that's, that program's a challenge for some of us that are computer challenged. And so I, that I can understand. I, where and what, are we learning Microsoft Suites in this program? Or is that a separate course from this, and this is a, a more basic or foundation?
So what's, that's a great question. What I've determined, when I met, when I met with the department, was that B C A course is in the business department for a reason, because they recognize that Microsoft is the industry standard, and that's what they want to teach kids how to use, and it's project-based, and they don't want to water down that course. They really feel like they can get to a lot of content and a lot of the Microsoft components in a way that's going to help kids succeed when they leave high school. The Google side of it is more or less an interesting, was an interesting discussion because that keyboarding class sits in the business department, but really in my mind, doesn't fit there. And so the keyboarding aspect of it may, but we wanted to, if we were going to keep it there, we wanted to make sense of what should it be? So before you even take that B C A course, if you wanted to take keyboarding, that it be more computer literacy-based, so you have the foundation that you need to not only keyboard, but to begin to learn how to communicate better with the tools that you have, to be able to integrate several portions of that tool, and really to be able to search and get the information you need without compromising, you know, your own security. Like, those basic pieces are missing right now from the curriculum just being keyboarding. In order to entice kids to go into that, to take that keyboarding class because they feel it's more meaningful, we felt that integrating it would draw more kids to the course because they want to take it and not because it's easy.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Alicia, just a quick question on graduation requirements surrounding business or applied arts, technical arts. I'm curious, how many credits are there and are kids, are students satisfying some of their graduation requirements through this current keyboarding course?
So it's a half-credit course. It's an elective, so they are, they're earning the half a credit course. The only required course in that department is personal finance. So they're, they're, because it's an elective at the ninth grade level, it does help fill a space on their schedule, but I'm looking for more than that, and we talked a lot in that C O L meeting around pathways.
Right. So as the, sorry, then the personal finance requirement is, that's state requirement?
It is.
Right. So this is just a catch-all elective at this point?
Correct.
And it's not a specific business credit that's required?
Yes, yes.
Angie.
Hey, first of all, I want to appreciate, I want to say, I appreciate the rewrite. I appreciate you taking the time back and, you know, listening to what we said, and I, I'm still not convinced this course is needed. I think there needs to be a broader discussion in the business department, and I think it needs to start before December nineteenth. And I will not be supporting this on that simple principle because I think keyboarding class will work for now. I don't know that this is any better. I don't know that you're going to get any more students. I think a lot of the stuff the students could teach us, and so I think you're going to have the same, you know, seventy-seven percent or whatever that took it just because it showed up on their schedule. I think we need to find things that the students need. I understand and appreciate it's twelve hundred dollars, but that's twelve hundred dollars that we could spend, I think, in another way that would be more useful and more relevant to students than a computer class that they've grown up with. I mean, they grew up with iPads in their crib, let's face it. I think we're just trying to fill something because we talked about it and, and, you know, we, we suggested stuff, and I, I don't think this is in the best interest of the students, and I will not be supporting it. But I, I do appreciate you taking it back and looking at it. And I also appreciate that the class scheduling is going to start now in September, the, the course revisions, because doing it December is, is too late. So I, I just want to let you know, I do appreciate your work. I appreciate it, but I, I will not be supporting it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
May I have one follow-up? Mr. Corporal? In discussing this with the teachers and, and writing this, in your opinion, is this now going to become a little bit more challenging under this rewrite for these students? Talking about challenging our students with A P, we're going to challenge them here on a basic level course.
Yes, I would say we're trying to challenge kids in every course that we run here, K-12. There'll be a little, there'll be a level of rigor here, but the teachers in that department really felt strongly that they could support kids on the standards that we chose to address in a way that would benefit all of them. Some of the application components are really basic. They're saying that they're finding that kids are not saving to the appropriate spot in the network, and they're saving things to the desktop because they're not sure where those places exist. And so something like that is very basic and does not take a long time to cover. That's not one of the in-depth standards, but there's some things like that that are built in that kids are going to catch on to very quickly, and there's other things that they're going to, the teachers will have to scaffold for, meaning they'll have to meet kids where they are and help them progress to get to what the expectation is by end of course.
Right. Okay, those in favor? And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And items of information and discussion, field trip report. And the entitlement grants, and I'm just going to ask you quick questions. These are non-competitive. And the possible budget drivers. Mr. Smith, any updates?
Been talking about possible budget drivers for a couple of months now. We're almost at the end of the road as far as the drivers go, and the next time that we meet, or the, almost the next time that we meet, is we will share those budget drivers with you in print, and you'll see how they manifest. I would say the additional piece, as state cuts come through, we continue to find kind of collateral damage, you know, outside of the direct cut to educational funding in the district. The state is cutting their programs, and then the State Department of Education themselves has been cut. And so programs that they used to support from a state level are now being pushed on to districts, and services that we used to depend on the State Department of Education for weren't directly cut in any of the governor or the legislator's cuts, but kind of have a trickle-down effect as the Department of Ed kind of figures out how they're going to absorb their cuts and what programs are going to get hit. Some of those become unfunded mandates for us because that work doesn't stop. And then the other kind of hammer there is some work we could stop, but we believe there, there's merit and efficacy in it, and we don't feel we can stop it. And so how we absorb those costs are almost daily becoming a lens that we look at the budget process. And then we're finally to a point where we recognize the insurance driver for next year. And then I would just reiterate that last year, you know, in June, we took seven hundred and fifty thousand in cuts. We absorbed the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar special ed cut from the State Department, and we had some internal service offset to our budget.
And two fifty from the town.
And two fifty from the Board of Finance. Oh, I'm sorry, the town council. The Board of Finance was the five hundred and seventy-five. And so when you add all those up, we start, like, you wake up in the morning before we even look at a budget, almost a million dollars in the hole that we have to climb out of. So that's about a one and a half to two percent increase, like, when you wake up in the morning, and that doesn't include utilities, the, the one, and some of this, you know, I'm foreshadowing what you might see less than thirty days from now. And so those are the main drivers. Again, I would encourage, if you have thoughts, concerns, suggestions, the sooner you can let me know, the easier it is for us to address them as we do our budget presentation. Mr. Givano and myself are working on the budget book as we speak, so if there's concerns, suggestions, or desire to have in that book, please share them with us, and we'll do our best to accommodate your needs so that when we go to budget presentation on that night in January, some of those things are already there, and it makes the process a little, little easier to manage in four or five nights.
Okay, I'm just going to take a little liberty with the budget drivers too. As I mentioned in my chair's report, we're, be meeting with the mayor for sure on Thursday, but I anticipate several more meetings before we sit down for budget deliberations. I'll do my very best to keep you informed of a summary of events on what that is. As I said, we're just peruminary, hey, this is where we're at, this is where we're at, and we're trying to find a roadmap of how to get the most efficient way to providing services and education for our students in the community here. So with that being said, and again, please, any suggestions or anything that you need clarified, please get in contact with, with us to clarify that. Other than that, I'd like to say thank you again for electing me this evening. And any other comments or questions?
Happy holidays, everybody.
And a Merry Christmas. You're absolutely correct. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.